It is 5:30 if we can call the regular October 17th Board Meeting of the Amherst Exempt Village Board of Education to order by standing and pledging to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wacholsky.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I take item number four, Recommendation to Adopt the Agenda as Presented, including any addendum. A motion and a second. A motion and a second as they're discussing your comments on that motion. Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wacholsky.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Public, hearing of the public, no one had signed in when I came in, has anyone signed in prior to here?
No.
Up to now, so no one has signed in to address us this evening, so then I assume that we would go to the good news report.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, great to have you here at North, thank you so much for making your rounds and coming to North first, we are happy to have you. So tonight I wanted to focus on our Camp Fitch and our Camp Nord experience, so before I talk any further, we have a little video here for you to watch.
Amazing.
Fantastic.
Great.
Really cool.
Camp Fitch is the best place on earth.
Besides North.
The nature there.
The area of my home city.
Can they wait?
A lot tiny mall.
You see?
Nature Center.
My favorite part is spacking people with my pocket stuff fire.
I really love the outdoor.
Throw rocks in there.
We're working on some of these things.
Exciting.
So for those that couldn't go to Camp Fitch, we have Camp Nord here at school.
Open a tie dye shoot.
And Emily about fourth grade, so here's just some fourth grade activities going on, you'll see it in our day.
So some of those things in the video, first off, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Mullin and Mrs. Beetler who also came tonight, they were also, Mrs. Mullin is the one who organized all of our Camp Nord for our students that stayed back behind, so please give her a round of applause. Like they said, there was tie dye, there was different crafts that they did, and then it was really awesome that this year we were able to collaborate with Steel High School and the Med Tech juniors came over and taught a whole, gosh, it was like about an hour and a half session on life-saving skills, it was awesome. And I will throw this out there that they planned that in like six days, so we kind of asked them late notice, so they were awesome. And then Mrs. Beetler also went to Camp Fitch again this year, and as you saw, some other people went to Camp Fitch, Dr. Messer was there as a chaperone, so it was just a great experience for our students, so we're happy to have that experience for our fifth graders. And then just some of those things you saw up there for our fourth graders, on a normal basis, those are some of the things you see in our fourth grade classrooms. Mrs. Beetler in her classroom did egg drops, there's some pictures from the egg drops up there, there are some pictures from science investigations, math investigations, I hope you saw on the bottom right, it said math is cool, our students love our Bridges math program here, it's a lot of fun, so they enjoy it. And then the one picture about, that you probably saw when you walked in, the different instruments in the trophy case, so that's what we're really excited for our fourth grade students, because we have Mrs. Perry here full time, she is working with our fourth grader, so by the end of fourth grade, they'll be able to decide if they want to go band or if they want to go orchestra, and then already have that instrument picked out so we can hit the ground running fifth grade here. So those are just some of the awesome, exciting things happening at North, so thank you.
Questions? Question, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many students did not go to Camp Fitch?
So we had, the most this year was not quite 70.
Not quite, it's about 70, yeah.
Yeah, about 70.
It kind of came and went.
Yeah.
And that was by their choice?
By their choice, yeah, yeah, parent choice.
Last year they had so much fun at Camp Nord that our fourth graders had already decided they were going Camp Nord versus Camp Fitch because it was such a good time at Camp Nord last year.
Last year it was.
They're selling it a bit much.
We waited till last minute to send it out. Yeah, no, we know Camp Fitch is number one, but it was nice to be able to give them something to look forward to, last year was because of COVID.
Yeah, and I will say our PTO is amazing, we had about, not quite double digits, I want to say it was around eight students that because of scholarship from PTO were able to attend Camp Fitch, so that was awesome for our families.
And my other comment, I have a lot of things to say, is that you post, or Nord posts, I'm not saying you, posts a lot about music or band at Nord, so I don't know who's responsible for those posts, but it gets a lot of coverage, which I think is good. I mean, every couple of days you see music at Nord or band at Nord or something at Nord, so you might want to add some other things besides that program as well, but I do think that it does inspire people to keep, whether they want to be in orchestra or band or whatever, so I assume that's coming from the music department.
Mrs. Perry, yes, yeah.
That's what I assumed, but I didn't know that for a fact, but she has posted every couple of days of people doing something new, so congratulations on that, good job. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you everyone who helped with all the camps, it was great, my daughter had fun, she can't tell me what she did, but that's a normal person.
All right, great, thank you very much for that good news report, okay? Item number six would be the treasures report.
Good evening, everyone, you have in front of you a brief revenue expenditure report, year-to-date, I'm sorry, excuse me, month-to-date on the left-hand side, year-to-date on the right-hand side, and compared to fiscal '22 last year and fiscal '21 the year prior. Just a quick glance, we are $1.1 million down in revenue from last year at this time, we are $600,000 up in expenditures from last year at this time, and our cash balance is down about 900. That's nothing to be alarmed at, I mean, at first glance, I'm looking at line 101 and 102, and we are down about $800,000 in real estate and pup tax revenue from last year at this time, and that just leads me to believe that the next settlement will be much larger or we had some coincidences at play, I can give you greater detail another time, but I wanted you to see, this is the first time you've seen this this fiscal year, and we'll look at this every month. The next thing I wanted to go over is we very briefly met Mr. Mullin, Mr. Engel and myself, local records commission meeting this afternoon before the board meeting, and really all we did was look at three different records disposals we have, most of the records disposals in my department, they have an actual electronic record to back it up, so we're getting rid of the physical record. There's only a few items, maybe a couple dozen pieces of paper that are actually, they follow up the records retention schedule and we're getting rid of the paper. There's also records retention, or records disposal rather, for food service, and those actual paperwork that we're able to get rid of at this point, and then another one from junior high. And this just, it's really important, paper stacks up so quickly, and it really, we really need to be on top of our retention schedule and make sure that we dispose of records when they follow up the schedule and not let the paper build up around us. And then the last thing, I just wanted to remind the board that Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference is November 13th through the 15th, it is customary that the board has a special board meeting on that Sunday, the 13th, and that is typically a meeting where it's considered a work session, I suppose, we don't take any action, and it is a time where central office administration and the board can sit down and talk about strategic planning and any other important initiatives in the district. Again, no action to be taken, that board meeting has not been posted yet, the notice has not gone out, but Mr. Mullin and I will decide the wording for the purpose of the meeting, get that out within the next week or so, and I don't have anything else this evening.
And that meeting will be at what time?
4:00 PM, tentatively it's planned for between 4:00 and 8:00 PM, and it's right at the hotel that we are staying at, which is the AC Hotel in Columbus. And just so everybody understands that Capital Conference is established, presented by Ohio School Boards Association, this meeting has always been a special meeting held in conjunction with OSBA, and we typically just have a meeting on Sunday, and again, discuss those strategic planning and different initiatives that are important in the district. Anybody have any questions? I will move on to my business then, is that good? Okay. This evening, item 7A is for the board to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September 12, and then the special board meeting from September 26, and that's item B. Item C has two months of financial exhibits for the board to acknowledge, August and September, all of the same, four exhibits you see each one, the fin sum, the cash reconciliation, the forecast line item report, and the check register for the month for electronic and accounts payable checks. Item D then, we have just one appropriation revision, and it's Nord's principal account, this is because they received a donation, I believe it is for, is Mrs. Harrigan here? I believe that they received a donation for a laminator from PTO, and so we asked the PTO present a donation check, and so then the appropriation, the upper limit for budgetary expenditures needed to be increased to accommodate that expenditure for the laminator. And then item E, as you are all aware, any invoice that's after the fact must come to the board if it's $3,000 or above, that's Ohio Vice Code, so there's one here, presented for your approval. Then item S, as usual, if there are any donations that we've received that the board must acknowledge. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions, but I think we should take items A and B as a separate. Okay, so I entertain a motion for 7A and B at this time. Is there a discussion on either of those items? Hearing none.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Wacholsky.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis.
I'm staying.
And Mr. Engel.
Then we would take items C through F. And a second. A motion is a second, is there discussion or comments on those items? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wacholsky.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Moving right along to item eight on the agenda this evening, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, so thanks, the board has asked me to kind of give them an overview of our report card, so I could do that this evening, and I'll try to be as efficient as possible, so you might want to maybe turn your attention to the screen, try to guide you through this. So if you're not aware, the report card changed quite a bit from the state from previous years, if you remember in the past, there were various grades, As, Bs, Cs, and so on, there were some significant changes to the report card, and in fact, when they were reviewing those changes, OD released multiple different sessions on it, and I think slides show presentations of about 86 slides about all the changes in our report card. So the report card still has some of the same measures we had before with achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, early literacy. Our scores are relatively similar to past years, except for progress, where we had two stars. Progress was an area that was very important, and that's something that we've been proud of the last couple of years, we were, if you remember, one of only six districts in the state of Ohio to receive straight As, there used to be four As in that area, for overall progress, students with disabilities, at-risk students, and gifted students. So we were only one of six districts in the state to receive four straight As for five years in a row, so when the report card came out and progress was two stars, it was shocking on that, so we'll talk about that a little bit later. Now, starting with achievement, achievement is, you know, the measure where we talk about basically pass rates, so this is how many students are passing, can be proficient with the test, and also, the state gives them scores in a different achievement level if they are above proficient, and so you get a rating of accomplished or advanced, and then if you are not quite proficient, there's basic and limited. And you can see from the chart over there to the left, the state will give you points for every student, with one point being a proficient student, and then 1.1 for accomplished and 1.2 for advanced. If you do not pass, the state awards you points for if you're basic or limited, and awarding students a .6 or .3. So what the state does is the state adds all those points up, and basically gives you your points, we received 91 points, and they determine your percentage based on your points versus the top possible points in the state, which is, you can see up top, 107.3. So we received an 84.8%, which equals four stars, and the four stars pretty much is between 80 and 90%. So that's, we relatively have always been in that B range, always in this, I guess, four-star range now. You can see over to the right as an example of third grade, the color coding there. So in third grade, this is just third grade for ELA and math, you can see the pink is proficient, the blue is accelerated, the dark, I guess maybe black is advanced, and then underneath you can see the basic and limited. You can see the difference between reading and math there for third grade, but generally, again over to the left, generally our largest population, about 30% or so, is proficient, and our next two largest populations are accomplished and advanced, and that's been consistent over many, many years. The reason I say that we'll probably continue to be in that four-star range is because I think everyone here knows when it comes to passage rates or how students perform on a state test, it always aligns with your median income of your community. So pretty much, if you were to want to know if any community or any school district received five stars, four stars, three stars, two stars, you really could look at their median income of the community, and that would tell you exactly what they got. So while passing tests are important, it's not the end-all, be-all. You can see here with achievement where we were the last couple of years, in 2018, 19, you see 96.7, 97.9, in 2020, that's when we had COVID, the pandemic, so you can see we dropped like most districts, not all districts dropped that pandemic year, and we are slowly starting to climb back up. You can still see that we have a lot of students in proficient, accelerated, advanced, but our limited and basic numbers have kind of increased a little bit today, okay? Any questions on achievement before we move on? Again, I'm trying to just highlight you on a few things, we can go more in depth if you want to talk to me later, otherwise we could talk here for hours. Any questions on achievement? Now we'll talk about graduation measure. Graduation measure's been pretty consistent, similar to achievement, it's been pretty much B or four stars over the years. They calculate this based on your four-year graduation rate and your five-year graduation rate, again, some students are special needs students, some other students, they do not graduate in four years of high school, some of them need another year, some of them need multiple years, students that we do have that, we have until 21.
22.
22, I'm sorry, 22, they're actually not counted here, I mean, they never graduate within four or five years, so not saying that they're negative against us, but the state doesn't, I mean, they don't graduate in four or five years, so it is a little bit of a hit for everyone. But the way they calculate this is they look at your four- and five-year graduation rate and they weight it, so your four-year graduation rate is weighted at 60%, and your five-year graduation rate is weighted at 40%. So when you calculate that out, ours is, I think, real quick, a 95.94, so it's relatively 96% when they calculate it out. In order to receive five stars, you need to have a 96.5 or higher, so we're very close to five stars, and we'll see how that continues after the pandemic if we can have more students graduating in four or five years. Any questions on graduation? Again, we're pretty close to the five star, and it's always a goal of ours. Okay, early literacy, early literacy was also four stars, you can see that we had about 73.3% of our students passed or be proficient on a third grade reading test, but we did have 100% of students promoted to fourth grade, because there are some other measures that we can use if the state has approved for students who may not be able to pass a one-day proficient or achievement test to possibly have other scores or other ways which they can be promoted to fourth grade. So we've always had some students, again, with special needs, other students who, again, are not good test takers, we can use other scores like our math scores and other things to have them essentially be promoted to fourth grade and not be held back, because again, they can't pass a test on one particular day. This score is calculated by, again, a weighted system, they pretty much take the proficiency percentage at 73.3, and they weight it, they also weigh how many promote to fourth grade, and this year, our score came out to be 84% there. In order to be five stars, you need to have 88%. So if you work the calculations, if we have our proficiency in third grade reading set of 73%, if it's 80% or higher, then we would get the 88% overall, and we would get a five-star. So again, like graduation rate, we're pretty close to five stars, we'd like to see that proficiency rate increase over the next couple of years, and that's one of our goals. I think our grant that we received from the state, all the work we're doing with dyslexia and our professional development, letters training, we're investing a lot in that, so I would expect to see results with our students the next couple of years. Any questions on early literacy?
So does this deal with the third grade reading guarantee?
Yes, this is a third grade reading guarantee, right.
Is there some legislation on that?
Yes, that may change, but as the state changes a lot of things, we have to keep up with, but that could change. And the state did hold school districts harmlessly, no student was retained in third grade because of the pandemic over the last two years, so that was a good thing. Next I want to touch base on gap closure. Gap closure is how each district is meeting your performance expectations for your subgroups, so in this measure, the state looks at not only all the students, but it looks at your subgroups, so Hispanic students, Black students, Asian students, minority students, also special education as a separate population, and also your economically disadvantaged students as a separate population. We have a 75.4% with all the calculations, which equals a five-star, so we're doing very well in that measure. I think a five-star would be if you received 60% or higher, so we're at 75.4, so we're in a good range. Four-star example would be 45% to 60%, and then down the line. So if we look a little bit deeper on this, how they figure out that score is based, every district gets its own goals, and those are what you see, those red dots for every bar. So the state sets a goal for each one of those bars, which translate into a certain subgroup. So you can see over there to the left, the English Language Arts Achievement, all the students in the district, you, for example, can look at the green, the first bar is our white students, and then down you can see next would be, I think, all students overall at 92, followed by our Asian students, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged, oh, multiracial students, economically disadvantaged students, English learner students, Black students, and I think the end is students with disabilities. So the state sets a goal for your district, and then your job is to make, meet that goal or do better than the goal, which we've been able to do in the English Language Arts and Math, which helps us get the five-star rating. Those numbers are your performance index numbers, so those aren't passage rates, so that's not 93% of our white students passing, that is, remember from achievement, they calculate how many students are proficient, accelerated, advanced, and give them points, that performance index score is what they're doing here as well. So this really is not measured by passage rates, it's measured by how students are doing, where they're falling, proficient, accelerated, advanced, et cetera, okay? This is very difficult to understand, and it's very difficult to drill down, it also is very difficult by district, because, for example, every district has a different size of those populations. So right now, you might look at the Asian population, but that's only 1% in our district. So again, it's, you know, smaller populations can affect that grade every year, because every year the grade levels are different, so it's very difficult and complex, I think, I'll show you the next slide, which can show you a little bit better on that. So this was just last year itself, you can see on the left is English Language Arts. Now this is, this is their growth, this is the progress measure, so a year's growth, or what is it, an average expected of our students, really ranges from negative one to one. So anything in negative one to one is average or expected growth. Positive one to positive two is above-average growth, and then negative one to negative two is below-average growth, and then you could even go negative two plus and positive two plus, okay? So pretty much, I mean, you kind of slightly fall below average 1.1 to negative 1.2, but generally, pretty much all of our groups are getting a year's growth over their English Language Arts. When you look at math, a little bit of a different story, our multiracial students are negative 1.5, but you can see our white students, which is our largest population, was negative 3.4. Not really a common thing, you often see that, I guess, the subgroup that was struggling the most or not having as much growth as you expect was your white students, but that's, that is what it is, and it is our largest group, so that makes sense that if we struggled in math and progress, it would make sense that your largest group would be identified there on the chart, negative 3.4. And you'll see how that in a moment does translate to our progress or our two stars that we received. Any questions on that?
So the state, when they set the goals, is that specific to districts?
Yes, every district, every single one of those is different. So in some of your other urban districts, those goals are much lower, correct. And a question that comes up could be, well, do you always know what those goals are? Not always, oftentimes you find out when the report card comes out. Pass, yeah, right, yeah, that's the way it is. Any other questions?
This current chart, that is for a specific grade or just the district?
It's the whole district, third through your high school and of course exams, all in one month. All in one month. Okay. I will mention this, I think this was, uh, I mean, everyone knows the pandemic did, did affect us, affected everyone. So we're not rated in chronic absences this year, obviously, but next year, they will start rating us in chronic absences. So last year, we had only, you know, 23.6%, almost a quarter of our students missed enough time in school that they were identified as chronically absent. So that, I mean, absolutely makes sense that could affect your report card.
Can you open up our data?
Ashley, is Ashley still in the room?
No.
No, okay. Uh, so chronically absent, how many hour, it's hours probably?
Yes, so if it is 65 hours of excused or unexcused absences in a year, then pushes a student into chronic absenteeism.
Correct. You said 65?
65 hours in a year.
Yeah.
Yes. Or it could be 38 hours in a month could also push a student into chronic absenteeism.
I was trying to figure out, because last year it was if you had COVID, you were out for 10 days. I was trying to figure out if one COVID step, what you meant to that.
So there, and I'm not sure what the exact language looks like right now in House Bill 410, but there were a number of those days that were exempt under quarantine. So a student would have so many, so many days of being quarantined that didn't count towards the chronic absenteeism. Um, I'm not 100% certain of how that changed for this school year, but the past two, that that was something that was taken into consideration.
Yeah. Last year, if it was a verified COVID absence and they were quarantined because of COVID, those were considered medically certified.
Yeah. Thank you.
So if anything's medically certified?
Medically certified doesn't, because there, we've got doctor's documentation saying that they cannot be in school. Those don't count as excused or unexcused, those are a separate designation.
Is that different this year?
It's different this year only in that we're not counting the COVID, we're not using COVID as we were last year. Last year, if someone gave us a, a positive test, we knew they were out with COVID, um, since we're no longer tracking or longer requiring. If they require a doctor's visit, then they would provide us with those, with that letter and that excusal, which would then medically certify, but otherwise, they're considered excused absences.
The test is open, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, let's talk about the progress measure. So, so we're, we're, the progress me- measure tries to show you how much growth students have gained in a year. So not whether they pass a test or not. The idea is that no matter where they are, you just want to see growth. So if they're a low achieving student, high achieving student, we want there to be growth, at least a year's growth or more. Um, the one thing that's difficult to understand for teachers and everyone
Who could I be? What's not looking at me?
Is that you would, you would think that, that what you see here are how our students actually perform and their growth. But it is not. The scores you see are actually how much growth they had compared to what the state was expecting. Now that's different. A good analogy I'd like to say is, for example, LeBron James or Michael Jordan. They're, they were the best NBA players in their time, their generation. You would think they would win the MVP every single year. They were the best athlete, the best player, the, right? But they didn't, they don't win it every year. Because sometimes, I mean, I guess they're expected to be that good. So sometimes, another player in the league plays really well and does better than expected, and they win the MVP. Not, they weren't the best player, they didn't have the most points, the most assists, most steals, whatever. They just did so well, they deserved MVP versus Michael Jordan LeBron, who clearly performed at this high level every time.
Is this like value added, Mike?
Yes, it's value added. Another term for progress is value added, which we use interchangeably, or the state does. So again, when you look at this, it's not necessarily the growth, it's the growth versus what was expected. What bar did they set? Okay? Yeah, you go.
Is it, we're okay? Making sure.
So if you, taking our report card, you can see that um, here, here's our, all of our grades. Uh, fourth through eighth grade take reading, math, and some science. And then high school has your English, algebra, jump, you're there in the bottom. So what you see here is um, most of our English Language Arts was green, which was expected growth. Except for eighth grade where they were red, which was probably really the stars would be a one star. Uh, in mathematics, we had uh, fourth, fifth, and seventh. Again, expected growth, sixth and eighth grade was uh, below. Also in science, in fifth grade, we had expected growth, but not eighth grade. So overall, we had some issues in eighth grade. Could have been that group of students, it's that, their grade level. Possibly have to go through COVID for two years. They just ended junior high, sixth grade, seventh grade, I mean, there are some things there. COVID absolutely had an issue with students. Also, I want to say this. Pre-COVID, your value added progress was always a three-year average. They took three years of data and made your report card. Because of COVID, the pandemic, this year, it's just last year and that's it. So this is only last year's data. It's not combined with other years to kind of maybe thin out some different. You understand what I'm saying? So like, different standard errors kind of go away, the bigger the population, the more data you had over time. So that, that, so that, so what I think possibly did affect us, or our district, from going five stars down to maybe two, one is the pandemic. Possibly, and again, I will never know, because you can't really drill deep into these calculations, and the state will never tell you what was, what was expected or not. But possibly, if we were one of the districts that were six years in a row, or five years in a row, got perfect straight A's, it's possible that they expected us to do really well and that our students didn't meet the expectation.
We're LeBron.
We're the, we're LeBron. We're LeBron, and then you have to, you have to be.
What's the dark blue mean, Mike?
Okay, so down, down to high school, so the dark blue is above average growth. So high school did really well.
Yeah.
Um, our high school students, really well. So English, algebra, American history did really well. The um, I guess, the
Geometry and Advanced.
Geometry and American Government.
Yep, yep, sorry, mine's bad.
You could look right here.
Yeah, I could, okay.
It's more fun to try.
That's true, that's true.
Biology, um, now biology was not, has not been in this measure in the past, but they added this year. And we met with Sarah, I and Andy Gibson met with Kelly Dever from the E S C to go over some of our data. One of the things she shared was, um, if biology was not added this year, we would have been three stars. So that one little area, you know, these areas can affect you really easily. So, but it is what it is. So let's go on. So I wanted to show you, again, here's Steele and their performance. And you can see, uh, green is average, all the other colors are um, above average growth. Again, only biology there was below expected growth. Next is NOR. NOR, you can see, had um, expected growth. And in fifth grade science was above expected growth.
Look at them. It's because, well, I wasn't there yet.
NOR, NOR did, NOR did great, NOR did absolutely great. Uh, and then what you saw from the original first slide was, the difficult area was AJH. Our students in AJH, specifically sixth and eighth grade, um, did, did not have expected growth. Though, though, those areas were one stars. So um, also science in eighth grade as well. Don't want to get too deep, but these are the actual numbers behind the colors. Right? So ELA was very, would do very well this year, except in fifth grade. In the first column there was a negative 1.34. And, and ELA eighth grade was at negative 3.22. If you go over to the right, you can see our growth index in those same areas in 2021, although during kind of our pandemic years, and in 2019, pre-pandemic. Here's math. Again, you see, we talked about already, the sixth and eighth grade had negative seven. So that, when you, when you community add everything up, you know, you have a bunch of ones, positive ones, negative ones, they're all in the average range, a negative seven can really bring the whole district down, and that's what happened. I will point out, since Ms. Beetler's here, I will point out, one of the flaws in value added is when they get these scores combined together, you could have one area, one grade level, one subject that is either did not do as well as expected, really didn't do as well as expected, or did way better than expected, which could skew your entire district. Which is, I believe, what we had happen the past couple of years with our straight A's. So I, I had in the past called it the Beetler effect. And it really is Diane in the fifth grade math. You can see on fifth grade math in 2019, before, pre-pandemic, 25. Kelly Dever said she has, she has seen uh, scores in the, in the teens, like 17 for seventh grade math, also did very well, but she's never seen that high score ever. So that is one of the reasons that we had been skewing the whole district. Which is great. But it, it does kind of give a false, false impression. So again, for
So Beetler is LeBron?
Yes. Beetler for your teacher?
But I, I, I would, I always went above too. I would do my value.
I, I would, I would say Michael Jordan, I would.
Oh.
I love that generation, so. So just wanted to point that out. So again, I, I had shares with Sarah. If at the end of the day, uh, going from three-year average to one-year average, and maybe removing, because of the pandemic, some of these really, really positive areas, that have kind of got us to more accurate picture, then that's where we are, that's, that's good. Rather have an accurate picture moving forward than maybe something that's kind of skewed one way or the other. Okay? Oh, go ahead. Real quick, again, Algebra I, excellent job. That would be both, that would be both the junior high, taking Algebra I and also the high school, they're combined, so great job there. And then there, which I said before, the fourth grade, I mean, the eighth grade science and biology, excellent job with American History, American Government, and fifth grade science. Again, those couple negative areas were, were weighing up that they kind of skewed us to the two. So that concludes my report. I hope I was efficient enough and went over enough, helped you understand a little bit more. Probably, maybe not, but I'd be happy to share some more in the future time or one-on-one and any more questions?
Questions for Mr. Molnar on his report?
So how do we calculate those expectations?
We will never know. No one knows, even the experts sound the same, they don't, they don't know. It's just a formula that's been time-tested, proven, researched by
There's some actuary somewhere.
Yeah. Which is the tough, which is the tough part, like, you go and drill so deep before you don't really know, like, why is it negative 3.4? I, I don't know. Then, so at the end of the day, what it comes down to is, if you want to drill down deep enough, you go and drill down to the student level, which is what we really should care about, right? It really, every student matters. So it's not just how the grade level did, or how certain class performed, it's how did each individual kid perform? And what could we do better next year?
And that criteria probably changes every year, that nobody even knows, except those gurus who create this document.
Right, and I asked this question, I said, okay, so for two years, we've really had a pandemic, and you, you're not using the data. So how are you calculating every student's expected growth? Because again, how we did is how, how they perform versus their expected growth. They calculated expected growth after testing was done.
Oh my God, that doesn't even make sense.
Right, so you have to, you have to wait till all the testing's done for this year, so you can come up with calculations to find out what the expectation was. So you can, so my question is, why isn't everyone just exactly, a year's growth, exactly what was expected?
It should be the baseline.
What's the baseline?
Yeah, should be.
Does that make any sense? No. But let's put the report cards out in public and give stars now instead of grades, and I will stop my soapbox. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent?
My turn. This is a very data-heavy meeting. Um, I wanted to take a moment to go into our special education profile and ratings. Um, Dr. Mustard, I believe you were the one that had asked about that. So going into this, I want to explain a little bit about what the special education profile is. And recognizing that the state has come up with different indicators to measure how each district's special education program is, is operating. And so this starts with um, preschool outcomes. Where are we serving our preschool students, how are they performing? And so they broke them into these five essential questions, but then they don't line up numerically, and it kind of bothers my, my linear mind, but that's neither here nor there. Um, but we look, they look at the calculations, the data, the performance. And similar to, well, not even similar to, you know, Mike was talking about how during the pandemic years, they weren't using that data. Our whole profile is based on their student performance and the district's performance in 2020, 2021. So all of the data that I'm going to show you is 2020, 2021 data, which was during the year where we had our on-campus and off-campus options. Um, so we had students that were home getting services, we had students that were here getting services. And so while they may have taken it out of the, the um, report card, it's still in the profile. The profile and, and how we performed on the indicators that I'm going to show you actually get released in late winter. So these were, this was actually released in January of 2022. And then just recently in September, they released our determination. So they release how you did, if there's any action you need, and then over the summer, they calculate whether or not you met requirements or need assistance. So just to give you some background too, and I, I believe I've shared this slide in the past, over the past several years, you'll see where our district enrollment has, has ebbed and flowed, you know, but staying consistent around the same age or same range. The state average of students with disabilities identified has also stayed consistent. Here in Amherst, what we have done differently is our average percentage of students with disabilities in the district has actually decreased. And this is attributed to a number of different reasons. Each building is really refining their, their response to intervention and how they're identifying kids and how they're providing kids services. It used to be in your, days of yore, in order to get extra help, you had to have a special plan. And now, like Mike was talking about, we meet kids where they are and we grow them from there. You don't need to have a plan to get extra help. And so we're really taking a critical look at making sure that the students that we are identifying as having a disability truly have a disability, because that's a big mantle to bear if it's wrong. So um, going into our profile then, you'll see that this is our 21, 22 special education profile, but it is based on 2020, 2021 data. There were some in, um, issues in target indicators. The first question being the preschool, where we're serving, least restrictive environment is where we're serving our preschool students. That year, it was kind of a hodgepodge of how we were coding them, because some kids were at home, some kids were in different places. It was, it was a lot of mismatch for coding, so we did not meet those. You'll also see here, while we met for their acquisition of knowledge and their growth, there were some social emotional skills where we missed the target. But the target, we missed it by, you know, the target was 81.9% or greater. We had 76.92. And also different from the progress targets that Mike had showed you that are specific to our district, these are statewide targets. That the um, SAPEC was, which is the Special Education Advisory Commission, comes up with what the targets are going to be each year. And then the districts are measured based on, on that. So um, this is where we are for preschool. Coming up next is how, how students are achieving. The first not met there is because the state, um, for students who have significant cognitive disabilities, you're not to have more than 1% of them taking the alternative assessment for students with significant for students with significant cognitive ability, disabilities. We had for reading, we had 1.12%, and for math, we were at a 1.09. So we were real close to that target, but that's the difference of half a kid in those calculations. Our participation rates were good, and then where we started to kind of fall off a little bit were then with our reading proficiency rates, again, measured during COVID. So this is how they performed during the COVID, our COVID year. We have some target areas with reading and then target areas with math where we need to, to take a look at, to make sure that we're, we're closing the gap where we need to be closing the gap. Which then goes down to the gap closing, which is where we missed in some of those areas as well. And again, the, this is based on a statewide target, not a district-specific target. And then we had, again, with our least restrictive environment, looking at where we're serving students, the two that are red are, one is whether or not we're serving students outside of their typical peer setting more than 40% of the time, meaning that they're spending more than 60% of the time away from their typical developing peers, or they're in a separate facility. Any questions so far?
How do we compare with like districts that are similar to us? Do you, did you see any of their reports?
We're pretty, we're pretty.
Spot on?
Spot on for this. And then I'll show you in a minute kind of where it fleshed out for where we've been. With transition, post-secondary transition services, we met all of those indicators. The post-school outcome says TBD only because we're in year two of our participation in the Ohio Longitudinal Transition Survey. So last year, all of our outgoing seniors and graduates that were identified as having special needs did an exit survey. We follow up with them this year to say, you know, are you doing what you said you And then we do a good job with our data, and we had no indicators met with disproportionality for identification or discipline. So all of that to say, where we've been in the past, we have been meeting requirements, even with some of those areas of red, we've, we've met requirements. And then again, for this year, we also met requirements. So we are on the path to doing what we need to be doing. We just have some areas, and using the profile data, we came up with some goals for the district, for the district and for the department, where we're going to take a look at how we're coding through EMIS, how we're providing social, emotional, and behavioral growth opportunities starting in pre-K, and then continue training our staff in the science of reading and working to align reading interventions and doing the same for math. And then we'll start to see those trends the other way. I'm very interested to see how this year even compares to, using last year's data compares to this. So that's the special education profile. Any questions?
So I'm guessing there was no consideration of comparing districts that did the hybrid or just loved everybody.
They just loved everybody together. Where they do a little bit of more individualization with the report card, they don't do as much of that with the special ed profile.
Questions for Sarah?
None for Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to the JBS representative board. I haven't met with the JBS for this month yet, so that will be this week. I don't really have anything to report. They had some issues with water, as you all saw, that I shared with you, so that was an issue, which goes back to exactly the problem that we had been talking about the multiple years, about needing to do some upgrades and some replacements of that building. So what questions do you have for me on that? Yes, Teresa, all this stuff, what's happening?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. That's nice to know. Thanks.
Open, for the first time, it's a homecoming, because this coming Saturday, the 27th. There's no craft fair this year, which has kind of been always like the homecoming, but this year it's just focusing on anyone who's graduated, bringing their families back and doing all that kind of stuff, so it's kind of a homecoming. And the last I heard, there were over 500 and some people registered, so I'm sure.
That's nice.
Their expectation would be around 1,000. So I haven't seen an update yet this week on that. Okay? So if you don't have anything to do on Saturday, 22nd, go out to the JBS for the homecoming. Any other committee reports?
I have a couple of, I'll just be quick for legislative stuff. So we were talking about the third grade guarantee. The ad hoc legislative committee just unanimously passed a resolution to send to the general assembly, the repeal of that. So the full board will need, at the November meeting. And the second thing that hopefully will go, the second resolution they, they will recommend to the general assembly is to allocate dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act to provide students in Ohio, all students in Ohio free breakfast and lunch. So fingers crossed. But right now, they're gathering data and stuff like that. There's other states like California, of course, that has gone on and done this, so fingers crossed. And some Title IX things, but yeah. And they recommended, reconvene the general assembly November 15th, so that's that.
Any questions on the legislative update? Is there any other board updates or committee reports that we need to bring before us this evening? None? And we may move on to item 10, personnel recommendations. Mr. Molnar.
All right, we have 13 items here, personnel recommendations. They vary from, again, changing of contracts, some new hires, some resignations and retirements. If you had a chance to review all of those items, so I'd like to recommend personnel items A through M for approval.
Do we have a motion on the floor in a second?
Second.
Second discussion or comments on any of those items there under item 10. Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Educational recommendations, item 11.
We just have one item under this today, and it's for an additional book fee for the junior high, $15 for the life skills class, which you probably missed on the end-of-year book fee. So that's item 11A. I'd recommend that for the board for approval.
We have a motion? Teresa in a second. So Mark, questions or comments on 11A? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Business recommendations?
So we have four business recommendations here on the agenda, but I will have a separate additional one to add in a moment, but let's take care of the four on the agenda right now we have. We have four on here, again, what you've seen, for our sports calendars, licensing for hockey practice, payment lieu of transportation, and also the cooperative bus purchasing program for receiving bids. So those are those four items. I'd like to recommend items 12A through 12B for approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Support somewhere?
Second.
Discussion, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
All right, so I'd like to add another item here verbally. We just received word today at about 2:17 PM that Ms. Kim Haney and five of her students have won a competition for the Domino's Farm to Pizza experience. So it's a countrywide competition that they won, and it's all expenses paid for the five students, and for Ms. Haney, including lodging, meals, hotel, even I think sub-costs for her while she's gone for three days. The trip, again, just notified today, but the trip is November 8th, 9th, and 10th. So it's coming up, which is before our next board meeting. So because it's in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and it's an out-of-state overnight trip, I thought it'd be important to bring that in now to approve it, so our kids in the city can attend. So I'd like to recommend item 12E for approval of the overnight and out-of-state trip for Kim Haney and five students, all expenses paid, for the Domino's Farm to Pizza experience.
Second.
Comments or discussion?
I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, it's awesome. Congratulations.
They seem to always win these competitions, no matter what they are.
What is it?
I don't know. I, I, it sounds to me like, I mean, just from the name, it sounds like they, they were having some sort of experience where they're looking at the process from maybe Domino's Pizza, having ingredients go from the farm to your pizza home. So I can't wait to see where they come back from.
Hopefully pizza.
And if I'm, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I have no idea. Take a guess.
Sounds good.
Well, maybe she can come to the next meeting and tell us all about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on that? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Is there any other business to come before the board this meeting?
Super quick. Since Rachel created the screen for board members to post stuff, can we just make it a regular thing that on meeting day, she makes a post saying, "The meeting is today." Because I think we don't have very many people come, and I don't know, like, I know it's on our calendar, but who goes to that? So if we just had a little Facebook post saying, "Meeting is tonight," and like, just make that a regular thing every.
And the board invites you to come.
Yeah. Perfect.
Go ahead.
Just a reminder, which will remind you again on the 13th, that the regular board meeting in November has been moved.
I see.
Correct?
28.
To the 28th.
Whatever.
All right? I just wanted to make sure everyone, because the previous one was like on the 14th or something.
Yes, and the November meeting is always at AJH.
Right, it will be at junior high. So it's on the 28th. I think it was on the 7th.
Yes.
So it will be after, within the Columbia, so it's on the 28th, okay? But I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that, okay? With that, I take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.